Three, um, Borough Council Voting Session. Um, before we get on to the next item, I'm gonna, there is one item on the consent agenda under item 11 that I'm gonna pull off for discussion, which is letter N, which is approval of 732-734 South Matlack Street. So that will become our discussion 10C. Okay, all right, cool. All right. Uh, item two is our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to have that please be led by Mr. Flynn.
I am proud and leaded to the United States of America to a one nation without borders, just for all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item three is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak, please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record. I'm seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is comments, uh, by the Borough Council and the mayor, and we'll start off with Mr. McCoy.
Just want to say congratulations to Chief Pellner and his team for getting their their ASO rating, uh, increased this year, uh, to a, I guess that's a three out of a three, which is related to their community's ability to suppress fire. So, great accomplishment. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Uh, Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, thank you, everyone. And I just want to, again, I want to thank the mayor publicly this time for giving me the opportunity to speak on her behalf on the 150th anniversary of St. Agnes School, a school that I'm proud that I attended in Westchester Borough. That was very thoughtful. Uh, thank you for that. I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Greetings from the sweetest ward in the borough, the sixth ward. Guests are probably wondering what that means. Well, I have every candy store almost. I have five breweries and, uh, just about every liquor that you can name in the sixth ward. We're the happiest ward in the borough. Right, Nick? I love the sweet shops, especially that. I only have two, a couple of things I want to, uh, speak to about tonight is, uh, as we ease into summer, uh, I think it's very important that those listening at home to apply sunscreen, especially on your nose. And if you have one as big as mine, you can appreciate why, uh, it's important to use sunscreen. And also, if you have any standing water around your property or any weeds around your property, make sure you remove them because we don't want the county to show up with that fogging machine and start fogging the borough. We had a very good presentation, uh, from our sustainability director from the county, and we want to do everything we can to, uh, prevent any spraying in the borough this summer. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, um, briefly congratulate all the parents and teachers and students on what was the most normal school year we've had in a very long time. Uh, as a teacher, very, very exciting. Uh, and I'm excited to enjoy what will hopefully be a very normal summer as well. Um, so have fun and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mrs. Stefano. Uh, happy summer solstice. It's first day of summer today. Um, I also want to recognize Public Works and the work that they're doing in the seventh ward related to the, the sewer leakage that's been occurring, although we've reduced it or it has reduced itself. I'm not sure which. Um, uh, I just want to recognize the hard work that's going on in the seventh ward to remediate that. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. Mayor DeBaptiste?
I, I want to say that this past weekend, uh, as a nation, as, and as a county and a borough, we celebrated Juneteenth, uh, which was, happened in June 19th and, uh, 1865, when, uh, the enslaved people, uh, of America were, got notification by the troops of, of the proclamation, um, given by Lincoln. And so that's a, now a nationwide celebration. And Westchester came together, uh, with its planning partners and celebrated that at the Chester County Art, uh, Association, at the Chester County History Center, at the Charles A. Mountain, uh, Center. So we celebrated it, uh, throughout the town, and we had a wonderful turnout. And I thank all my planning partners for doing that. And also to let you know that the Chester County History Center, this weekend, on Friday evening, they have a program about the life of a hometown hero, Bayard Rustin. And then on Saturday afternoon, they will be celebrating, uh, the Tea Dances, which was a dance held traditionally in New York because of New York State. Uh, it was against the law to serve alcohol to anyone who identified as gay. And so they had two dances. So they will be having a two dance this Saturday afternoon outside with DJs and music and fanfare. Um, and so they invite you to join with them. Uh, and I, you'll be hearing more about, uh, Outfest coming up in the fall. Uh, but for now, uh, join with the Chester County History Center Friday night and Saturday afternoon. And happy summer, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a few things. First, uh, congrats to Keith and your whole team and everybody, Public Works and Police Department and, uh, good fellowship, everybody who had a hand in the Turkset Festival. Uh, it's one of my favorite things that happens in the borough and just an awesome, you get amazing weather, amazing crowd, the bands are great. So, uh, thank you for that. I really enjoyed that. Um, along with what Mr. Flynn was saying about mosquitoes and, and, you know, being, uh, there's dunks that are free to all property owners that you can get here at Borough Hall. Um, just check for standing water on your property is one of the best things you can do to prevent, uh, mosquitoes from breeding in the borough so we don't have to get sprayed, as he was saying. Um, also want to, uh, thank all the Public Works employees who helped out with Greenfield Park. Uh, there's been a lot of updates down there in my neck of the woods and the new planting, and I'm, I'm really hopeful that that's gonna start helping, uh, bait some of the flooding issues we have. I know it's not gonna fix it all, but it's gonna, it's doing something and it looks much better too. So, thank you for all that. And then lastly, uh, just happy Pride Month, and I want to thank, uh, Zach Hayshack again, who is, uh, um, a member of the HRC, Human Rights Campaign, who donated that flag a few years ago now, I believe. Um, and it's up, uh, displaying underneath the American flag right now outside of Borough Hall. So, uh, I just want to thank them again for that donation. Okay, uh, moving on to item five, which is approving the resolution and liquor license transfer agreement with WCTHGLL LLC. Um, I know that we have to do this in a specific order. So we have an agreement that we're gonna approve, and then we're gonna approve a resolution.
Yeah, so I will, uh, go through the, the history. The resolution sets out the, the background. Um, an application was filed on March 22nd, 2023 by WCTHGLL LLC, which is a mouthful, um, to approve an intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license that is currently located in East Calant Township. They want to bring it into the borough of Westchester for a proposed restaurant at 9 North High Street. Because the borough already exceeds the quota under the liquor code, the Pennsylvania liquor code, you are required to hold this public hearing to approve the intermunicipal transfer. That hearing was conducted on May 15th, 2023. Mr. Nagel is here. He was representing the applicant at that hearing. The, um, applicant did agree to give council an extension of time within which to consider the application. And as is typically the case, when council is, um, has these applications, we like to ask the applicant to enter agreements that address council's main concerns about additional liquor licenses being located in the borough of Westchester. Um, Mr. Estey in my office attended the hearing, prepared the agreement. The applicant has signed the agreement. The agreement basically covers and limits, uh, you know, otherwise what they would be permitted to do if they didn't enter this contractual agreement. So the agreement should be adopted first, approved first, if that's council's desire, because it is a condition of the, the applicant entering this agreement before you would act on the proposed resolution to approve the intermunicipal transfer.
Understood. Thank you. Um, there, there are con, I have, I have something I want to bring up, but is there any comments or questions about this from council or the mayor at this point? Okay. Uh, the only thing, question I had was, and this is something that I know was a concern in previous years or times when we had transfers or liquor license transfers coming in. If this, um, business doesn't make it, right? So I know, I think what, what we were, uh, got the information we got about the, this restaurant looks really amazing, and I think it'd be a great thing for the borough, but for, God forbid, this business doesn't work, could anybody, could they sell that liquor license to anybody and that would that have to stay inside the borough, i.e. a sports bar?
Good evening, Brian Nagel. On behalf of the applicant, good to see everybody. Yes, they could sell the license, but if the operation was different from what you've seen, and there's a provision, provision in the agreement that covers this, then it would have to come back before council to approve the new operation.
And that means any operation, not just like a different concept, right? You're saying just another owner, somebody else owns it?
Unless it's, unless it's a new owner taking over the exact same restaurant, yes.
Understood. Okay. All right. Yeah, that would be my only concern about bringing in a new license is that, you know, God forbid it's in workout, and then they want to build something or, you know, use it for some other purpose, that would be an issue. But if they have to come back before us, that makes me feel better about it. So, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Nagel.
You're welcome.
Any, any, any public comment on this? Okay, then I think at this point it would be appropriate to make a motion to approve this liquor, the agreement, liquor license transfer agreement.
Mr. Stefano, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Mr. Flynn and seconded by Ms. Dorsey to approve the liquor license transfer agreement as presented. Further discussion? Okay, then Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro is absent. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries six zero.
And then the second part of this would be to approve the proposed resolution that does approve the intermunicipal transfer of that liquor license, again, subject to all the conditions stated in the agreement that you just approved.
Any comments on that or questions? Public comment on that? Okay, then I think it would be appropriate to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it as read.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Second.
And thank you, Ms. Dorsey, for the second. We have a motion made in second to, to adopt the, um, what am I saying? Resolution at this point, as presented. Uh, without further discussion, Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Uh, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro is absent. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, item to, item number six, which is a presentation of the Freedom Shrine by our National Exchange Club. We have a, a few, uh, members here that are, are gonna speak on behalf of this. Um, we got to take a picture earlier, and if anybody hasn't seen it yet, is there a name for that room, Dana? Is there a name? Oh, oh, great. Okay, so there's a room we're gonna call now the Freedom Room. It's right near the, the entrance, uh, to Borough Hall here that you can go in and see. It's really pretty incredible, and it was a gift by the Exchange Club. So if you want to come and say a few words, that'd be great.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Ed Karolos, the current president of the Exchange
Just gotta make sure you're speaking into the mic, that's all. Just because people at home won't be able to hear you, so that's all.
Ah, okay. I'm the current president of the Exchange Club of Westchester, and I'd just like to make a few comments if I can get my phone to work right. I would like first of all to express my thanks and appreciation for attending our brief dedication ceremony this evening. I hope that what we do and say here will help you to better understand and treasure something which all of us are lucky enough to live in these United States of America and enjoy so much. That is, of course, freedom. The freedom to live our lives in just about any way we ourselves choose. The freedom to get together wherever and whenever we choose without government approval. We are free to choose our own careers, free to say what we think needs to be said, free to attend the house of worship of our choice, and we are free, I suppose, to take our freedom for granted. For nearly all of us, this gift of freedom has come free of charge, at no cost. But for others, there has been a price. Perhaps you know someone who is or did pay a price for our freedom? A soldier, a sailor, a marine, an airman, a coast guardsman. The men and women of the armed forces are one example of how some people dedicate a part of their lives to protect our freedom. In years past, others have also paid a high price. Thousands of Americans gave all they had, their homes, their property, their lives, to get and keep what millions of people on this earth do not have today: human freedom. That's one of the reasons why the Exchange Clubs of America decided more than 76 years ago to assemble what we call the Freedom Shrine. Developed by the National Exchange Club, the Freedom Shrine originated from the Freedom Train that toured the nation in 1947 that was sponsored by President Truman, and it's also the year that the Exchange Club of Westchester was formed. It was 1947. So this was carrying an exhibit of historic documents. The shrine was developed so that Americans, especially young Americans, could look and see for themselves how freedom was actually bought for us. Exchange Clubs have dedicated thousands of Freedom Shrines throughout the United States and Puerto Rico, in universities, libraries, schools, state capitals, city halls, borough halls, and even on a retired U.S. Navy bat, battleship. For this reason, we Exchange Club members think the Freedom Shrine is so important, because a Freedom Shrine is much more than just 30 documents hanging in neat rows. These documents are windows into our country's past. If you peer through these windows and read the documents, you will see the miracle that is America, our nation, and the best of which it is so beautifully represented: human freedom. Because we live in a free country, it is hard to appreciate how wonderful and how rare freedom is. The Exchange Clubs of America are proud of the Freedom Shrine, as well of our other programs that promote Americanism, that seek to prevent child abuse, and that honor the outstanding youth of America and of our communities. We hope you'll be proud of your Freedom Shrine also. And thank you for giving us an opportunity this evening.
Thanks so much. I really appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. And as I said, if you didn't get a chance to go see it yet, on the way out today, take a, a walk in there. It's on the way out, the building. Uh, it's really incredible, the documents and the, and what they create. It just looks awesome. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven. Discuss short-term rentals. Uh, Planning Commission's comments. So I guess this, this went through Planning Commission, and they, they have some comments for us? Okay.
Can you pull up the, that I sent you? Yeah, I'm gonna go pull up the comments.
That this be brought back before you, because your, your planning commission did have some suggestions, and I just want to make sure that you are aware of your planning commission's review of this ordinance and what their thoughts were. And then obviously you have the right to make policy decisions. So, um, their first comment was, um, and this was one of the first, when I was here in April at your work session, we talked about how you could, if you wanted to, allow individual leasing of bedrooms as short-term rentals, um, rather than requiring it to be the entire dwelling unit to be rented. And council at the time gave us direction that you want to require to allow the use, it has to be renting the entire dwelling. It's not allowing one bedroom to be rented. There was a comment from, and I wasn't at the planning commission meeting, so I'm not sure who specifically had that comment, but one of the comments from the planning commission is, they, they don't see a reason why you couldn't just lease one bedroom. So it's just for you to reiterate to us that the way it's drafted now is what your intent is, which is that you have to lease the entire dwelling, not one singular bedroom. If you want to go through all of these and, and make decisions on them or hear all of their comments.
Oh, I feel like if anybody has anything specific about each item, maybe a good time to chime in. So if anybody want to speak to that specifically?
I'm worried, I'm worried about if we lease one bedroom at a time, we're gonna be running boarding houses, uh, just like down the beach when I had, uh, brown hair. You could go down and rent a room and stay overnight and get a shower in the, in the community, uh, shower on the boardwalk. And I would, I'm strongly against renting one room because it would turn into a boarding house.
Yeah, and I think we had decided we didn't want to do that, right? So has anybody feel strongly the other way, considering what the planning commission's comments?
I, I would just like clarification. So, one bedroom versus, I have a home and I have a studio apartment upstairs or downstairs, attached to my property. I could still rent that, right?
Yes, because your studio apartment has a bedroom, living, kitchen facilities, bathroom facility.
Okay.
All right. Second comment?
I, I think, I think we're still in a, you know, we don't, we don't want to allow that.
The second comment was, and again, I don't know how many people on the planning commission felt this way, Kevin maybe can give you that, was that currently the way it's drafted, it only allows short-term rentals by conditional use in your town center district. And the comment was, why are you limiting it to just your town center district? I know there had been discussion about that. I think Mr. McCoy had raised that potentially. Um, where you landed was that it's only allowed in your town center. So that's one or the other. Just want you to confirm that that's still where you would like it.
And, and just for some additional background on there, we originally drafted it as a special exception. And then, Mr. McCoy, you had asked for it to be changed to a conditional use process. So if you, if you, just to recall the process, that what we had decided.
I don't necessarily believe it needs to be restricted to town center, but I'm in the minority up here, I'm sure.
No, I, I, I agree. I don't know if any other municipality restricts it to a certain particular area, if that can be clarified.
Uh, what, I mean, I, I think it should be kept in the town center o, uh, only. Uh, I, I worry about people who live in, you know, other parts of the borough who, you know, aren't expecting to have people coming in and out as tourists, per se. Uh, I think when you live in the town center, it's a little bit more expected to be, you're near hotels, you're near businesses, and, uh, I just don't, I, I don't think it's quite appropriate for other parts of the, the neighborhood, the NC ones and twos and stuff. So, uh, for me, I'd want to keep it in the town center. We're a bit split on that.
I agree with Mr. Stefano. The, uh, ha, we have two of the, we had two of them in, in the sixth ward that I know of. And, um, uh, having small children, uh, and mothers, you know, walking up and down the streets, seeing all these strangers, uh, coming in and out of a house, that, uh, was a little disturbing for the, uh, uh, the, the people in the neighborhood, uh, because, you know, the first thing they, they teach you, little kids, is stranger danger. And if you're not used to seeing someone, uh, continuously, you know, it's a little scary for the kids. And I think it's, if it's a business for rental, like a hotel, short, cheap hotel, it should be in the, in the business district.
And, yeah, I agree that it should not be in NC one or NC two.
Uh, we're still split on that, so. That's where we are. I don't, I mean, I, I think, yeah, there will reach out to Sheila and what they get a, what the majority thinks.
I'm sorry, did, Mr. McCoy, did you have a comment regarding that?
Not opposed to it being in NC one or two.
Okay. So we are split. Okay. All right.
So, I have
No, we can talk to Sheila, because, yeah.
So, this whole issue came about because of the young lady, um, that was trying, that said she had the, that her place she has was, was a B&amp;B. That's what we're talking about, right? At one point, um, and she was, I guess she had gotten a cease and desist letter or something similar or equivalent to. Um, keeping it where we're keeping it, how does that affect her? Because she was
She's in the, she's in the town center.
Yes.
Yeah, she's in the town center.
She is in
Yes, she is.
Because I remember her being right there, kind of on the cusp.
Yeah, she's right. Yeah, she is on the cusp, but she's in the town center.
Okay.
Yeah. So we can reach out to Sheila, because she would be the, you know, the deciding vote on that, and we'll report back after we reach out.
Okay.
Okay? Um, the next one was the parking. So the way it's currently drafted, you're required to have, just look here, one parking space per bedroom. That's where we landed. There was a lot of discussion about parking, but one parking space per bedroom for each, for, if you have a dwelling that you rent as a short-term rental and has three bedrooms, you need to have three parking spaces. The planning commission indicated that they did, and again, I don't know how many people on the planning commission, but there was a comment as to whether that's an appropriate number, that they felt that that would require more impervious surface and that it may not be needed to have that. I do want to make another comment, that, um, the applicant who you were referencing, who has an appeal that's been on hold, her counsel wrote a letter and indicated two points I also wanted to make, make sure you were aware of. One was that he wanted you to consider the use to be a byright use, which I think you've rejected. And the second was the parking. And he referenced a Lancaster County, um, toolkit that indicates that they would, you would not need any parking unless you went beyond four bedrooms. Once you got to four bedrooms, you would need to have an additional parking space per bedroom. So that was their suggestion. Again, it is completely 100% a policy decision on how you want to address parking needs for this use. There's a lot of different things, a lot of different ideas. But again, where we landed was one per bedroom.
I, I think if we limit it to the town center, I'd be more open to being, not needing a one per bedroom. But I think just my neighborhood alone, it's already crammed. We have students everywhere. So if we just change into an Airbnb and you don't require parking, it's, it's gonna be out of control. But if you're in town center, they can park in garages. If you can give that, that option. So, I, I think it's, for me, it's, it's dependent on whether it's, it's only in the town center or not, where I stand on this issue specifically.
It's probably a very
I concur, Mr. Stefano.
Okay. So again, we'll have to report back after that.
Okay.
Um, the next one was, um, somebody on the planning commission suggested that, and I think Mr. Allen would, would support this, because I know his concerns were about taking away, uh, inventory for homeownership, that they wanted to limit somebody's ability to operate an Airbnb to somebody who is an, it's an owner-occupied property. So, for example, if I owned a house or a dwelling in the town center, I would be permitted to lease it as a short-term rental. I couldn't buy it as an investment and never have that be my home. So there is somewhat of an administrative burden on that, because we don't have in here, we don't have in the ordinance, any restrictions on how frequently you can lease it. So it would come down to, again, complaint-driven that this person isn't ever really living there. I mean, there will be inspections, but, um, I did research this to make sure I had to think about it after the planning commission's meeting on whether that would be lawful. I think that is lawful. I think if you wanted to do that, I think you could legally. Um, but again, that's not something we have in the current draft.
And, and for additional context, the, um, ADU ordinance that we just, just discussed last night, there is a requirement in there that the property owner resides at that property 50% of the year. So, you know, we can put it in there. It's a matter of policing it, and they would have to sign an affidavit that they are residing there 50% of the time. And, uh, you know, it's not, it's not an impossible regulation to enforce, but
Yeah.
Yes, I have a comment about that. If we were to expand it to NC one and two, I could support it being owner-occupied or something similar to the 50% of the, the year. But, um, town center, I'm okay with, with not.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, I think I'm, I'm on board with that as well.
We're gonna have to have this back on your agendas again, and that's fine. This, that's fine. It's an important topic. So, uh, we'll have to report back after we hear from Ms. Vicaro. Okay?
Yeah.
I believe that was it.
Great. Okay, yeah, so we'll continue this discussion. I think I'm totally fine with, I don't think there's any rush that we need to have this time soon. So, okay, thank you. Any comments in the public on this agenda item?
Scroll down.
All right, so we'll move on to item eight, which is our annual report by the Westchester Community Campus Committee. I see Dr. Dietrich's here. Come on up. And, uh, Mr. Bryson, I don't know if you're gonna come in on the, he's on the committee too, right? So, gonna, hey Julie, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Great, thanks.
All right. So we, um, by the ordinance report, as you know, I think our last report out was in the fall. So we want to do that for the spring and run through a couple of items. And of course, if there are any requests for more detail, we can do that, but I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. And so essentially going through some of the achievement And so essentially going through some of the achievements this past semester, some things in, in process, and then a couple of things for moving forward. So by way of some achievements this semester, we had the university's Office of Off-Campus and Commuter Services partner with the Community Warehouse Project. And there were about 300 donated items to the Community Warehouse Project. And I want to thank Kevin Gore and Don Edwards, because we wanted to make sure that we were coordinating with them, that there weren't individuals being penalized as that process was happening. But again, trying to, to make sure that we're supporting community need and taking care of some things that otherwise might be a problem when students are moving out. We've also, when there was a chance with the Super Bowl, a World Series, some risk mitigation, and I think it was nice that although we're aware of the public notification of the meetings that we have, I think to have some of those individuals available and working together, should something like that happen, we kind of noticed that it was a good vehicle to at least get some communication going and, and shared preparedness. There was also student and, you know, university support for the Earth Day cleanup. And Mayor, I know that there was some interest in making sure that we did that and, and there was some contribution there. And then things in process, one of the things that we've really been working on is the welcome back. So again, trying to be as intentional as possible and looking at that as an opportunity to bring the university and borough together. And there are quite a few things being planned in that regard. One is, you know, to have the, the High Street banner and specifically have the Westchester CCC as a host on that banner, because again, we're trying to make sure that it's very clear and how we're coming together and planning this. And the Chester County History Center is a partner in doing some tours. We are working to have a volunteer fair and that will be at a line space, partnering with the Greater Westchester Chamber of Commerce and the Westchester Bid to make sure that we're getting those notifications out, both by way of organizations that are volunteering as well as businesses that are participating. We have right now about 15 businesses, whether that's a discount or 10 will be, have indicated an interest for window painting, so that'll be part of it. And also to have the fire, police, and EMS at a designated location. So one, by way of not only the students, but the broader community and those relation, you know, relationship building opportunity, but also we thought as a recruitment opportunity for those services. I will say too, because I know sometimes for no other reason, the contributions and funding support of the university when there are different things going on, should it be helpful, that's about $20,000 that the university is putting in to support this. And one of the things that we're also trying to tend to, but me being mindful of what's the work of the CCC and what's to be done outside of that, is around the student property and the points program. So we've had some conversation with Kevin Gore and the mayor and Scott Zuckin outside of the committee, but making sure that we're attending to some of those key issues. The adopted block program is no longer, and so Don has been working with the other Don to make sure that that signage is removed. We have a variation of that program. And what we would look to do is moving forward, so that this didn't happen again, is that, in other words, to have the need for signage to go up and potentially be removed if leadership changes and/or the program changes, is to still indicate when work was being done by student organizations, i.e. cleanups and those types of things, but have it as more temporary signage. So again, it would not necessitate some of that, you know, things putting up and being taken down. And one of the things that we ask of you is, as we move forward, we're going to be establishing a community engagement strategy and specifically looking to incorporate residents more, because we feel like we've heard some of the feedback and we think that we can do a better job of bringing in residents. So we ask of you, if there are things that you're hearing or ways that you feel that we can be doing better in that regard, please let us know. And one of the other needs that we had identified was around connecting students with volunteer opportunities. So helping, again, the organizations within the community and meet community need and making sure that students are aware of that. So we have in process right now at the university, a new, relatively new division of university advancement and external affairs that is looking to do that, to have a one-stop shop, so to speak, of where all of those opportunities, different opportunities will be accessible to both internal and external stakeholders. At the end of this year, we did reaffirm our mission and guiding principles. And moving forward, we want to take some of the feedback from our group, some of which I just expressed to you, and how we can continue to enhance our work. And the last item that I will leave you with and ask is, we're, we've been reporting, well, last semester and this semester had a verbal report back to you, if that's something that you would like us to continue or you would appreciate a PowerPoint and/or a written report in addition to. Everyone operates differently, simply let us know. And I guess attached to that as my last item is, we also talked about in our last meeting as we're rounding up this semester, is we want to, wanted to make you aware that we want to have a regular cadence, so that you can expect from us, unless you advise otherwise, that we will do something like tonight. This is what we accomplished, this is what we intend to do. And that way, there's some regularity and consistency in how we report out our accomplishments to you.
Ah, thank you. Mr. Bryson, anything you want to add before, anything you want to add before council questions?
I'm going to say no, what a concept. What I'm going to be doing.
Just scooch to the mic a little bit, Don, just so. Okay, thanks.
My big mouth usually overcomes that. I'm going to be doing some social media stuff, just some blurbs here and there in the Westchester-oriented Facebook groups, like Nextdoor, that sort of thing, just, just to develop a broader knowledge of what we do. I mean, people down in the south, southeast are kind of aware of us, but borough campus issues can, just sometimes extend to the whole borough. So I want to try to reach those people. Plus, it would be a good, a good way of getting suggestions from people, you know how, on Nextdoor especially, it's like, why can't you do this? Well, we can. So that's what I'll be doing. Other than that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and thank you. So Julie, just a couple of things.
Sure.
The welcome back, is that, is that homecoming or is that something different? Is that what you're calling it?
I'll clarify. It is something different. So we have Welcome Week and that really starts, so bringing in that new freshman class starts on Wednesday. This particular event, so yes, thank you, I should clarify, is Friday, August 25th, 12 to 3. So if there are other ways that we can be.
Yeah, no, I like that.
Bringing other stakeholders in.
The other thing I was going to ask about was, you had mentioned at the end how, you know, what we prefer in terms of a presentation. I think this is fine. I don't think we need anything more elaborate, unless anybody has anything different. I think what you're doing is fine. We really appreciate you, you know, giving us the information and the work that you guys are doing, for sure. Any, do we have any questions for, for Julie at all or comments or?
No question, but I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Julie Dietrich, because she really put a lot of energy and enthusiasm and leadership into this role, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much, I appreciate it.
I love it, so.
Any, any public comment or questions for this agenda item? Okay, cool. All right, move on to item nine, which is a discussion of Hoops Park Use Agreement with our Westchester Adult Baseball League. Mr. Doris, are you going to take this?
Yeah, I will. This came up as a result of the discussion last week for Parks and Rec and Public Works and the installation of steps that did not go through the proper process and being presented to council for approval. And as I said last week, you know, we are requiring the Friends of Hoops Park to get permission to put up an owl box and a bat box and put in a meadow, yet we're not requiring the same process and, we're not following the proper process and protocol to install steps. And as I, you know, looked, continued to investigate this further, because I, I recognize that this is not a one-time occurrence, it's occurred more than once. There's an irrigation sprinkling system that's been installed that also did not come before council. And the field is being watered daily, I believe, again, without council approval, which is a use of our utilities without permission and frankly costing the borough money. The baseball league is renting that field for free, so renting, I use that loosely. The only agreement, as I understand, Mr. Karowski in place, is a normal rental agreement. There's no agreement that says inside the field, outside the field, who's responsible for what. So I am concerned about how we have been handling this, I'll use again that term loosely, rental. There are a number of issues that I know have also been brought to your attention over the, in my tenure, in the last three years. Parking, we heard a lot about last, last week and the, you know, the, the responses, we can't do anything about it other than talk to them. The, the rental agreement that is in place clearly says violation of requirements could result in revoke, revocation of the rental. So I was down there last week as a result of the steps being installed. I had noticed in the past, but it was confirmed last week that the, the field is not being cleaned up with trash. I was there at 6:30, 7 o'clock Tuesday morning, there were wah-wah big gold cups all over, empty water bottles, just trash all over the field. The trash receptacles that had been there before the steps were installed seem to be MIA. There's, you know, household receptacles there now that clearly cannot hold the trash of the, the baseball league. The porta potty, which we agreed a year or so ago to have installed, is not being used. I have residents of East Bradford and the townhomes there at Park Place regularly complaining of gentlemen relieving themselves in the woods on a regular basis. There are pictures of that. So the porta potty is a waste of everyone's time. I understand that the netting to catch this foul balls has been in possession of the baseball league for some time. That was mentioned on a call with the Friends of Hoops Park, I think you were on that call, but has not been installed. We heard last week how foul balls are being retrieved from private property. I've had residents of the borough say that their driveways are being used for turnaround so folks can park. They're actually damaging or knocking over, you know, stone walls or retainer walls. Nothing's being done about that. I, I could go on about some of the complaints that I've gotten from residences. But, you know, I, I am concerned about how we are handling this, again, I'll use the term loosely rental. And, and I'd like to have the, the issue around the sprinklers being installed and the fields being watered, I'd like to have that addressed.
Sure. It actually goes back like a year and a half where the league was installing sprinklers and we made them stop. And it was unbeknownst to me that they had filed the same permit like they did through the Building and Codes Department to have that go through those channels and not through the channels of the Rec Commission and through Public Works Committee. So I had a conversation with the league last week and this week. I informed them that a new direction or a new agreement would be put in place and there'd be parameters that would be set forth by the direction of council and the mayor of what those would be. As in the past, as I explained, I think in the email, the agreement we have is for use of the field. The quote unquote handshake agreement that's been in place for some time requires them to take care of the maintenance of everything inside the fence, which mainly pertains to the fence and the ball field itself. And in that case, they are lacking. There are areas of defense that are damaged. I honestly, I don't know anything about the netting that goes up that would protect balls. I'm not aware of that, I'm not privy to that information. But my question would be, with what agreement had been in place for so long, and it's antiquated, and like I said, it was a handshake agreement, I would want direction from council. What, what do we want to do or what are the parameters we want to place as far as boundaries and the parameters within those boundaries, that then I can take and put together agreement with our solicitor and say, here's what the league has, this is the, the new law, this is the new arrangement. There is no, you got to do this, you must do that, this is what is, has to be done. I don't know what the, the league's finances are like, I honestly can't tell you, I'm not privy to that information either. All I can tell you is that I've been working with the league in basically the same capacities in my tenure here as director. There have been some issues over the years, we have tried to correct those issues as much as humanly possible. Some have been corrected, some have not. We've worked with the league as far as the parking, get them out of the park, they've done that. We've worked with the league as far as the restroom, we brought them a restroom, they're not using it. The foul balls going on people's properties and such. We run into similar projects, or similar problems over at Greenfield that seems to be more of an issue here, I think because the games are played with larger, stronger people and the balls go farther. So again, I'm not sure, from the director's perspective, I need direction from you guys to tell me what is, you want this new contract or agreement to state. And I don't know if that goes back through the public safety or Public Works and how you would want that handled. As far as the steps, I had a, a conversation with the borough manager in regards to that. That was brought to my attention several months ago. And I said, you must go through the building and codes process, and it was my fault, that's on me that I did not follow up and take care of that with building codes to bring back before council. That was my responsibility and that I did not do. Any changes, not maintenance, but any changes to a park need to go through the same channels, as simple as a bird box, an owl box, they all need to go through the same thing. I've been preaching that for years, and in this case, I did not. So I want to be set forth that with the league and what their responsibilities are and what I can enforce to make sure that those are being upheld.
Question, I, I want clarification. You asked the baseball league not to install the irrigation system and they did it anyway?
No, this was stopped, again, I want to say, I don't have the exact date, a year and a half ago, they stopped whatever they were doing at that point in time.
I, I remember, because I was the one that brought it to, to Borough Hall's attention.
And then they, they stopped whatever procedures they were doing at that point in time, went back through the, the correct channels for building and codes, got the proper permitting and so forth, and then moved forward with the project.
I, I have some general concerns around how this has been handled and the fact that it has gotten to this point for it to get attention, because as I said, we have had conversations over the last three years.
Yes, we have.
And now, you know, there seems to be a gross violation of the expectations of any rental. You know, if I were to rent Hoops Park, there are certain criteria and behaviors that are required, right, to be able to, any resident or any person who wants to rent it. And there's just been, it feels like blatant negligence of what the expectations are in the requirements of the rental agreement.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because you, you said rental, but you said that they're not paying to rent this?
No.
But is that, but are there other leagues, like the leagues that use Greenfield, pay a rental fee?
They're, they're, again, the agreement that had been in place, and again, it's not written, has been they take care of everything with inside the fence and that's their, their payment. And again, I don't know what they cost. In my discussions with the league, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000 to $15,000 a year. They maintain mainly the turf, mainly to keep it as a sports turf. I don't know the exact figures. But if you were using Greenfield Park, I did some calculations earlier, just quickly, it's $45 for a two-hour rental. And it's $90 for a half-day rental, $100 for an 80-day, $100, $180 for a full-day rental. I did the quick math, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about between $6,000 and $6,500 for a rental for 16 weeks or what is their season.
Okay. I, I, so I, I think I understand, you know, you're not charging them, but their, their payment is by maintenance of the field.
Correct.
Of the property.
Which is, you know, they're cutting the grass and fertilizing the grass that, you know, and maybe picking up the trash.
Understood. I, I don't know what they pay for, for their services through Windview Athletic Field.
Mr. Stefano?
Yeah, Mr. Flynn.
The, thank you. So can you tell me exactly why the grass is so green in the infield? Do you know?
At their park?
Yeah, at Hoops Park.
Yeah, they take better care of it.
They're watering it.
Okay, so that, that's one question. I'm going to follow up with that. I had a conversation earlier this evening with Mr. Metrick, because I. I had a conversation earlier this evening with Mr. Metric, because I, I don't like to blindside people, although I'm very frank, as you know. I have a very small filter. When I found out that there was an irrigation system there, I didn't believe it. I said, it's impossible. They'll be watering the field every single day or every other day. I went down there, couldn't find a timer, had to trace where the water was coming from, couldn't get into the building. I was there about maybe 10, 10 of, or 5:00, 6:00 in the morning and the ground was soaking wet and I saw the, the sprinklers spitting. I'm gonna, I recommended to Mr. Metric to cancel the league's application for theft of service because they've been using borough assets for two years now without paying for it. You need electricity to run a pump, I assume, and you need water to water the grass. That's theft of service. Mr. Metric did not disagree with me because he was somewhat unaware of the extent of the theft. I can tell you that if I water my grass, which I do, my sewer bill goes up and my water bill goes up double every summer. The mismanagement of your department, of this whole thing at Hoops Park, you've basically 13 years have turned a blind eye to what was going on down at Hoops Park because it was easy to do. I talked to Ms. Dorsey about it. I think what we need to do is have a, a firm, legal, binding agreement, like a housing agreement, because they leave their, their, their property there most of the year. And they, and the league is really not called, we have it listed here as Westchester Adult Baseball League. That's not what it's called. It's Westchester Ba- a baseball league. Because the previous owners took excellent care of the facilities. And as I was down there on Tuesday morning, Greenfield's never left that deplorable. So I don't know how council feels about it, but the, I, I would recommend to council and to Mr. Metric that we immediately shut the water off, disconnect the electricity unless meters are installed and the league pays back two years of, of estimated money that they've actually stole from the borough. There is, there is a, a faucet in the dugout where you can dampen down the dirt, which is normal operation for a baseball field. We do it at Greenfield as well, because it's connected to the bathroom. But I'm, I'm disappointed and I talked to Mr. Metric about it. I asked permission to talk like this to Mr. Karowski. It, it's, it's very disappointing because it was easy for you not to pay attention. And the borough has lost thousands of dollars probably in water and, along with, with Ms. Dorsey's claims and the, the nomenclature that the younger age group is using, my bad. Well, my bad is two things wrong, steps and irrigation. Yeah, they went and got permits and yeah, Mr. Gore did it, but he was blindsided because when I questioned him, it came from your department, which you're responsible for.
Yes, sir.
And I came short. When I say short, because I'm not permitted to ask for your dismissal. I am not permitted to do that. But I made it strong enough decision talking to Mr. Metric that I was very disappointed and along with Ms. Dorsey. I'm more upset that theft of service, because the borough doesn't have the resources to do it. And the second thing is the lack of management of, of oversight. So I, I apologize if I was too coarse, but it, it comes from the heart and it wasn't something that, I, I didn't ask permission to talk to you frankly about.
Understood.
Mr. Stefano, I, I, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, I, I've been talking about Hoops Park for a while and the unchecked behavior of the, of these baseball players. And I've spoken to you numerous times and numerous times you have told me there's nothing we can do about them. Numerous times you've said, well, I've asked them not to park here, I've asked them to do thus and such, but I will say what I said the other day. This is Westchester's park. It is not their park. They play there at the discretion of the Borough of Westchester. And so your whole philosophy and viewpoint of that is that it was their park and truly they acted like it was. And they chose not to put up a net that I understand that they've had for a while? Because why? Why bother to be inconvenienced with paying to put up a net when they can park on the borough streets and in the borough neighborhood and not use the parking lot? That was a sign there for the privilege of people who come to the park. So they don't care that they've inconvenienced neighbors. They don't care if they piss in the park. They don't care if they hit people's property or get on their property. And I've seen firsthand the arrogance of some of these players. And I've talked to you about it and even when I talked to you last week about how could these steps be built without you bringing this to the council, because I come to council meetings, I didn't hear anything about steps being said. And you sat there and you told me that you were permitted to do so, that you could do that and all you had to do was check with codes and housing and make sure that they had the proper permits and they could do it. That's what you told me in your office, in your office that day, last week or two weeks ago, whenever this started. And, and come to find out that you bring bats, you bring bats, boxes and owl boxes and you didn't think that it was important to bring steps? Concrete, 14 concrete steps to the borough? That, that sounds intentional to me. It sounds very intentional to me because you've been in their corner the entire time and you've not been in the corner of the neighbors that suffer the consequences of rude behavior. So this isn't the adult, I, I mean, years ago, they used to sit there in their trucks and drink and cuss all late at night until the neighbors got sick of it and kept calling on, calling the police on them. And consequently, that poor behavior stopped. I mean, but this is the trajectory of what we've been going through because this isn't the league. And, and now you say, well, this rental agreement has now turned into a handshake agreement, so there's nothing in place. Well, why didn't you say we need to put something in place? Why didn't you say we need to do something about it? They need a rental agreement. They need to pay. But you never once suggested that. And I don't feel like you have stood out, stood up for the citizens of Westchester or the neighborhood who surrounds this park and puts up with poor behavior all the time. And, and, and I'm still upset about it because you've allowed this to occur. And you've done a lot of great things here, but you have allowed this to occur. And I don't appreciate it.
Mr. Stefano, I'd just like to recommend that we put a pause on the rental of the Hoops Park until we can get restitution and figure out what we should be being paid for that rental space.
Understood.
And also repayment for electricity and water. Yeah. And that should be turned off immediately by somebody because there's a, a lock on the door, so.
Mr. Metric, do we need, can we just direct the Parks and Rec to do that, Keith, to do that or do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, exactly. There is an agreement in place and it can, it's in, it's in, can be terminated by council, I believe. So I believe a vote would be in order.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Terminate an agreement.
Okay. I make a motion that we pause, as Ms. Dorsey says, we pause the, the agreement, they cannot use the baseball field until the borough becomes whole for all theft and services and, and, and the place is cleaned up.
I second.
Would you be willing to change your motion to terminate the agreement instead of pause? I don't know if pause is a legal thing we can do.
The agreement calls out a specific default paragraph. One of the paragraphs, first of all, requires the licensee to honor all the rules and regulations concerning the use of the facility. And what some of the comments tonight were, it, it appears as though they're not following those rules. So the next paragraph does say that if the licensee fails to comply with any of the terms of the agreement, the borough can either elect to cure the default or to terminate the agreement. So I think the proper motion would be to terminate the agreement. I think we want to handle the water issue separately, to be honest, because I don't know enough facts as to who knew about them using the borough's water. If, if somebody who, who they believed had authority to authorize them to use that water, I don't think you can call it theft. I think if there was somebody that had apparent authority to authorize them to utilize water or enough people at the borough knew that they were using that water and didn't address it in this license agreement or didn't ask them to pay for those bills, I'm not sure we can class. Terminate the, the license at this time.
So I meant my, yeah.
Just, can we just clarify the motion real quick, Mr. McCoy? I'm sorry, just real quick.
So let me, could you have a, a question on the motion? The, I'd like to terminate the, the current lease agreement for Hoops Adult Baseball Field, Baseball League.
Okay. And then as a second, Lisa, are you okay with that change? Okay, sorry, Mr. McCoy, go ahead.
I'm confused whether there's a handshake agreement or there's a real agreement.
There's a license agreement in effect.
Okay. I do, can we get a copy of, of that? And so within that agreement, it states that they were responsible for taking care of the grounds within the fence.
Yeah, it says they have to follow all the rules and regulations concerning the use of the facility and it lists a couple of rules. No serving of food or refreshments, no possession or use of alcoholic beverages, all trash must be put in cans or tightly closed in plastic bags, can only be used from dawn to dusk, no amplified music or sound, no cars or vehicles shall be parked inside the park grounds.
Just to be clear, to answer Mr. McCoy's question, it does not say they are responsible for inside the park and we're inside the baseball field, inside the fence, and the borough handles everything outside of the fence? That is a gentleman's agreement. There's nothing in writing. They have a regular rental agreement that any resident or person or entity could rent any park.
And it has no fee associated with it?
A dollar.
A dollar, yeah.
And to follow up, Mr. McCoy, and to follow up, I did speak to the past president of the Westchester Adult Baseball League and they would come yearly to, when they had the, I didn't realize how big of a deal it was. They had yearbooks and everything else going on. They would come once a year, the president, the vice president, Jordan Lugwick and Tom Walsh would come to the Recreation Commission and come to Borough Council and meet with council and recreation and tell them what they planned on doing in the next come, year to come. And the agreement was a, a verbal agreement between the Borough of Westchester, Parks and Rec. It actually started with the Westchester School District and the, the, the Borough of Westchester, because there wasn't a Recreation Commission back in, I think, 1956. And they agreed, that, that original group, you know, agreed to take care of the, the baseball field itself. But when that entity dissolved, the new organization, as far as I know, didn't come back to the borough and, and, and start the process over. And we should have never, you know, now, now, you know, 50 years later, you, you don't do anything on a handshake. There should have been a, a signed lease agreement spelling out all the parameters, which has never been done. And that should have been done by the director of Parks and Recreation when he knew it.
So what I, what I think, you know, we have a motion to, to terminate this agreement and I think it would be appropriate then, if we want to continue with them, they would have to come up with a new agreement with everything spelled out clearly. All the, you know, council would definitely have to give direction on exactly what we want in there and make sure that's all clear. But we're not going to deal with that tonight, so.
I, I do have one clarifying question for Ms. Camp. You mentioned that there is a dollar, they rent it for a dollar per year. Is that correct? Yeah, take your time.
I, I read a prior. There have been many experiences. I was reading the article about the Dana and the writers being.
And with, and with that, Mr. Flynn mentioned services. Does that give us the right to go and get that money back as far as any electricity or water used during that time since there was an agreement signed?
There's, the license agreements in place does not speak to the use of water or any utility. So again, that would be something we would have a separate conversation and.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Sorry, I have another, another question. So who signed the agreement on both sides?
The league directs. It's, it looks as if this is your signature, Mr. Karowski, and Charlie Cooper.
And my signature as well. It's the same process we follow for these types of arrangements in parks when organizations rent space for shorter or longer terms.
And so is this agreement with this new group under the same, under the same rules of regulation as the old group?
Yes.
And how long has this new group been doing this?
Eight, eight, nine years, I'm guessing, from 2015, 2016, somewhere in that neighborhood.
And the agreements are written and, written and signed annually. This agreement that's up here on the screen, it starts May 11th this year and expires in a year's time.
It expires when?
End of the year.
One year.
And nobody knew about the irrigation system?
Like I said, I, I want to say it was.
Not know about the irrigation?
We told them to cease their operations, again, I want to say it was maybe a year and a half ago. And in that time, they received their permitting and what they needed to get unbeknownst to me at that time. I literally didn't find out until recently that there was, I thought they were watering their grounds, which still would be, I guess, a theft of water, but I didn't realize they had an irrigation system, honestly.
And so I guess it went to you, Mr. Gore?
Simply issue a permit for what they apply for. I, I can't speak for what agreements or anything that's handled in those parks.
So just so I understand the process, when you issued the permit for the build or the irrigation system in the park, that is not, any, any permits in any of the parks that gets, get issued don't have to come in front of council. Is that my understanding?
No, they, they, I said, in this case, the steps, yes, it should have been. It should have, I should have brought that information back to you for approval. Should come through the Public Works Committee and then through council. It was not done intentionally. It was brought to my attention months ago and literally it fell off my radar until they were literally building it. And at that point in time, it was too late.
It sounds as though we need some checks and balances for borough property, right? Just to make sure that everybody knows what every, everything that's going on on borough property.
And I, I said, going back to my tenure here, I try and bring everything possible before the committees for the Rec Commission and council, just to cite the bird boxes and owl boxes, even as small as it may be, that's what I do. And in this case, I did not and it was not intentional.
So in any new agreement, I mean, the, I know this goes back to the gentleman's agreement about taking care of what's inside the fence, but, I mean, you could interpret that as you're taking care of the field, which means you gotta water it. So it, I think whatever the agreement has to be clear, you're taking care of it, but you're also, you know, gonna reimburse the borough for water, electricity, whatever. Because if I, if it were just a gentleman's agreement said you need to take care of it, well, I'm not gonna let it die. I gotta water it to maintain it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. There is a motion and a second on the table, but I, I do have to allow for public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment at this time? If you come on up and state your name for the record.
I'm Charlie Cooper, the director of the Westchester Adult Baseball League. Um, I guess, Lisa, can we go through your points, please? Um, irrigation system, I apologize, Mr. Flynn, to your point, we'll pay back. I was unaware that we owed due bill. Um, Kevin approved our permit, and it was in our contractor's hands. We were not privy to that information. I also wasn't privy to information that we had to go through Keith, and then Keith had to go through you guys. I do apologize for that. Lisa, to your point of us paying rent fee, free, sorry, we do pay a dollar a year. I understand the most recent agreement doesn't state that, but it has historically. Mr. Flynn, to your point that it's a different entity, I have to disagree. I haven't double-checked, but I'm pretty sure while we are called Westchester Baseball League, we are legally still the same incorporation. The name just changed. The teams are still the same, it's just a different ownership. Bob Ludwig, Jordan Ludwig stepped down. The parking, again, we've gotten off the grass, we've done our best. I understand there's issues with your neighborhood, Mr. Mayor. I believe you live next to the field. Do you live next to the field? Okay, I understand there's issues with parking, and we're working on that. Unfortunately, I can't be at every game. Let's see, the trash cans, Ms. Dorsey? They are in our shed, locked away, because currently they're out of the ground, and we don't want them stolen. I understand they need to go back out at some point when the steps are finished. What else we got here? The porta potty, I do agree, it's not being used, but it was also placed very far from the field. It's really not useful for us at that point. I do agree, we shouldn't be peeing in the woods. The big one, netting in possession, I don't know where that rumor started. We are not in possession of a net that would protect our parking lot. I'm sorry that you guys thought that. We're a nonprofit organization. Our bank account usually hovers around $4,000 and $5,000 in case of emergency. Foul balls on private property, yes, we do have to go across the street sometimes to pick up foul balls. Again, we're limited budget, going to have so many baseballs, we have to go pick them up. I will say, I've never seen somebody tear up a garden or break a retaining wall. I'm at that field every day from May 11th to August 16th. I prep the field, I line it, I drag it. So there's a little more going on than the grass being cut and there being fertilization. I think it's been seeded four or five times this year. It's been aerated three or four times already. And to Keith's point, yes, we've had a handshake agreement that defenses in are our responsibility, and then the outside is the borough's responsibility. Then I just, again, reiterate that we will pay whatever. We don't really have the money, but we'll figure it out. And then further comment, the steps, the infield renovation and the irrigation system have all been paid for by an anonymous donor. Again, improving public space at no cost to the borough. And there's further plans, again, have to be permitted and improved, and I guess now put through for you guys, to replace our dugouts and the scoreboard, and then fix any damaged fence. And sprinklers only living for a month, Mr. Flynn. Yeah, they weren't hooked up last year because we did have the pop permits, and then we had some issues with our contractor, and then I believe like May, May 10th, whatever. I think that's, I think that's it. I don't know if you guys have any questions for myself?
I appreciate you showing up tonight and, and the transparency, and I, and I hope that we are able to work together, because there is a history, right? 1956 is 67 years, if math is correct. However, there are some expectations, and the, and the, it has to be a true partnership, right? So the myths around the sprinkler system, the irrigation system, the water, we can address that internally, but I do think we have to have respect for the residents that are actually, you know, paying for the maintenance of that park, since it's being rented for a dollar. And I appreciate, you know, the seeding and the dragging and all the things that you're doing. However, there are still some other, that, you know, that doesn't wipe away all the other things that need to be addressed. The, I can, I've had neighbors who live in that neighborhood, as I do, say that, you know, the, I don't know if it's spectators or players, turning around in their driveway and hit the, a stone wall, knocked it over, and just kept moving. I've had neighbors say that as they were backing out of their driveway, out of their garage and their driveway, there's someone in their driveway blowing the horn at them, like, you know, what are you doing? Backing out of your own driveway and I'm parked here. So just, I mean, just common courtesy, you know, and the sense of entitlement, it's shared space.
I agree. However, I would also agree, I'm sorry, the all points you make regarding the common courtesy, I would say that there, I believe there's an ordinance to the borough regarding unleashed dogs, and every day I come to that field, there is anywhere from five to 10 dogs off a leash earning over the $15,000 maintenance we maintain. I've been laughed in my face when I ask them to put it on a leash or however. And Keith's been laughed in his face, and he's the park director to that ordinance. So I think it sort of falls into the same realm of how can we, like, as a league, how can I make, keep those people out of that drive? I just told a player tonight, just came from the field to please move his truck, but I got, I can't be there three hours a night, every single night. I mean, at some point, there's just human nature. I also noticed elderly folk who will park on that street. I don't know about you guys, but if my 90-year-old grandmother comes to a game, I wouldn't want to see her car get damaged by a ball. And for her, the shortest walk would be that driveway, where that, somehow driveway, that road. So I don't think it's just players, I would say it is spectators too, in which I can't really control spectators. But I do 100% agree, I think a new written agreement, word for word, like our responsibilities, the borough's responsibilities, needs to be in place to cover everybody. Yep.
I would suggest that for your, in this scenario, for your grandmother to park in the parking lot, because you and your organization have put up the proper nets to mitigate the balls flying over them. If you can spend $5,000 to $10,000 on steps, concrete steps, the organization, if that anonymous donor can do that, then perhaps you could show some respect to the neighborhood, put up the nets that have been requested for years and years and years and years. I've lived there for over 20 years, and this has been a long-term conversation, not, not something that just happened two weeks ago. It happened two years ago. It was a conversation I had with Keith then, well, two years ago. So this isn't a new conversation. I've been true to this conversation. And I suggest that if you want to continue to play ball there and have a place for people to park, there was at least 20 spaces on that parking lot that you don't use, because no one wants their car damaged. I get that. Then fix it. Or fix the change, since you're going to have money to fix the dugout, then fix the direction. So maybe the balls need to go in the field and not in the parking lot. I, I don't know. I don't play baseball. I'm saying fix it. If that means put up a net, then put up the net. The poles have been there for 20 years. The poles have been there for 20 years. And why they put up the poles? The poles have been there, and I'm not exaggerating, it was probably over 20 years, because I've been there over 20 years. And those poles are there. So put up the net, so that you have less of these pop balls. I was in my driveway, looking for something in my car, and stood up from looking on the floor of my car to see a guy digging in my flower bed. He didn't ring my bell. He didn't say, can I look for the ball? And then two weeks ago, I saw him do that across the street in my neighbor's driveway, in my neighbor's yard. So there's no respect, you know? We're going to park in your neighborhood because we can, because we're not going to fix our parking lot that's there, that was put there for the, for the ballers to have a place to park. So do the right thing and put up the net.
I agree. They definitely get to mention, I mentioned the dugouts and the scoreboard. The donor has mentioned the netting system. To your point that we don't have a net, I want to make that very clear. There is no net in possession of the Westchester Adult Baseball League right now. And the poles, I think there's only one pole there. I could be mistaken, but I remember looking at the same pole, thinking the same thing.
Yeah, one last comment to Mr. Cooper. Thank you for your frank and your sincere conversation. The, the netting, the netting is going to be very, I play a lot of baseball, netting is going to be very difficult for foul balls, because, and I mentioned to Ms. Dorsey about the infield fly rule, you know, you can't have the nets that far over that you can't have an infield fly rule. But there has to be some kind of direction, directional barriers at the top that could catch things, you know, flying over the top. And, but I stand by my point that we should terminate the contract for this year and then move forward with a better plan for the league next year.
All right, thank you so much for your.
I have one more comment, sorry. In regards to the net, say we get a net in the next week, like what, how should I go about getting that put up? Should I go through Keith?
Yeah.
Come to you guys?
Keith, yeah.
Okay. When would your next meeting be then, I guess, to approve that?
We meet every month, so it'll be in July.
It would be a month before you approve something like that? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other comment? All right, so there is a motion and a second made, it's been on the table for quite some time. Mr. Metrick, would you, do you need a reminder of the motion, or are we all clear to terminate the contract or the agreement? Sorry. Okay. Mr. Metrick, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Ficaro is absent. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries six zero. All right, we're going to move on. Where the heck are we? Here we go. M10, our discussion items, we have three. Item 10A is discuss the Borough of Westchester Voting Wards map. This was discussed last night. We had two renderings that we could possibly go back to the courts with, the, I don't remember the numbers, was it A4? Can you just go over what they all are, so we know which each one is? A1, two, and?
Yeah, sure, sorry. A1 is the existing ward map, which we cannot keep because it does not conform to new district justice boundaries.
When you say existing, you mean the one approved by the court?
Correct. Yeah, that's correct. Sorry. A2 was the map that council approved last year around October, and then the court approved and got forwarded to the AOPC, which was then denied. The reason it was denied, because of the next map, the crosshatched areas weren't congruent with district justice boundaries. So that created a situation where persons in a precinct of, would be voting for more than one district justice. So we, we found out about that in?
Two months ago?
Two months ago about, yeah. So we, with Nick Fink's help, we, we used an algorithm to create map on page four, which is different than existing maps, and does, does as good a job as we can of balancing a population within the parameters. But you note, some of the wards in that chart below are either red because they're outside, too high for the range, or blue because they're too low for the range. So we're out of compliance basically with five out of the seven wards, and that's because the district justice boundary is drawn in a way that you really can't make three wards that meet the minimum in the western side, and you, you end up having a couple wards that are very large, because we have these weird, heavily populated census blocks in the university, which was our initial struggle. So that was, this was presented to the ACT committee, and then map number A5 was, I believe, had some favor last night when we were talking about this, in that it's a minimal adjustment. It's taking that census block of a population of around 400 that's outlined in orange, using the existing ward map, and then just taking that population and putting it into Ward Four. And we circulated the, the final page in this PDF shows you the population counts where Ward Three ends up being low, that's, that's what the L's for, and Ward Five ends up being high. But in this instance, we only have two, two of the seven wards that are out of compliance with regards to population.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where the state of things right now.
Yeah.
I would echo what I heard last night from legal counsel, that although we do have a month, if council can come to a consensus this evening about what map is best, that might be preferable, but also keep in mind that the person who's not here, you know, this is one of that council person's wards that will be affected, so it might be prudent to get her concurrence with, with this suggested change, should council want to move forward to it, and then we could do it in July.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm totally against A5. I think A4 makes sense. I had thought during the ACT committee that myself, Mr. McCoy, and Mr. Allen, we're going to review the maps again. That's what we discussed at, at the ACT committee. And again, the, that map's new to me. I mean, that's the first time that I could actually see it. I couldn't see it well last night. So I, I think that, why not give it another shot, and then that's it? And if not, then we go with the, the map that was presented, the A4 map.
I, I think A4 is, like I said last night, it looks, my ward now looks gerrymandered. It's like, it's odd, it's very odd. I think A5 does the most minimal amount of change, and still adheres to what the courts are asking us to do, and keep everything within the boundaries for the MDJ. That's my opinion.
Process wise, would you like council to cycle this one more month through ACT committee, and we can hopefully have a vote on this next month?
Well, I think since Mr. Ficaro is not here, that, that we, that we should, since it's her ward.
Yeah, that, if, if it wasn't her ward, I would say let's just vote on it tonight. Makes it tough. I can't make a motion anyway, so. But I wanted to vote on it. Yeah, since it's not, she's not here, we can do, we can do one more month and. I think just because Sheila's not here, I think it makes sense, her ward is affected by this, although I feel minimally, but it is affected. Yeah. Is that okay with everybody? Go back to committee? All right, I think we have to make a decision soon, though, so next month's it, let's, let's go. So, all right. So, all right, so we'll push that back to committee, and ACT can do another round on that. All right, so item 10B is discuss issuing a waiver of conflict of interest to the borough solicitor regarding the representation of Westchester Borough and econ development. This was briefly talked about last night. We got a document from, from.
Yeah, so there are two applications that Mr. Khan is affiliated with, obviously entities that he has created for purposes of development, 250 East Market Street and 330 West Market Street. Other people in my firm are representing Mr. Khan in a development in West Whiteland, off of Ship Road. So we are required, it, it does not present a direct conflict. We are not representing Mr. Khan and would not represent Mr. Khan in any application that. that comes before the Borough of Westchester, but the rules of professional conduct require us to, um, provide you with the information that he is represented in another capacity in another municipality and that if you're not comfortable with that, then you will, you would have to get outside counsel, the conflict counsel, we would call them, to represent the borough with respect to the application at Rubenstein's as well as the Mitch's Gym property. And that's completely in your discretion. Um, I know there were some other cases where that's been done and that's perfectly appropriate. If you're comfortable with our firm continuing and it would, it would be people, myself, um, who do not represent Mr. Khan in any capacity, um, we would, if, again, with your consent, we would represent the borough's interests with respect to those two applications. So it is 100% your discretion and your decision and it's simply a policy decision to make.
Uh, I have a question. So obviously this isn't the first development that Mr. Khan has, uh, or has attempted in the borough. I I know that you, we use conflict on the Wyeth property, but that was because of the representation of West Goshen Township, from your representation of West Goshen Township, correct?
Or I think we raised the issue then and the council's decision at the time was to use conflict counsel. I know for the development that happened at the corner of, uh, Church and Gay, we did have a waiver signed for that development. So we did represent the borough on that application, uh, because at the time, again, others in my firm had represented Mr. Khan in different, in different municipalities. So whatever.
That's what I was getting at. I was going to ask about that specific property. Did you represent us? And you said you did. So, um, I I personally don't have an, an issue. I don't see a conflict, um, as we did in the Wyeth one, it's a different development. So, um, I don't have an issue. I'm happy with the waiver, but.
Yeah, I, I just feel like it's cleaner to do a, a conflict attorney in, in these cases. Um, yeah, I mean, I, one question I guess we'd have is if, you know, we were to have somebody build a lawsuit against the, the borough because of the development, we would still have to defend ourselves i- if one of the issues was that there was a potential conflict of interest and we sign the waiver, would we still have to defend ourselves against that?
Well, again, if you sign the waiver, then technically under the rules of professional responsibility, there isn't a conflict, but the rule requires us to bring forth the fact that we, there isn't, as the professional rules of responsibility define it, there is no conflict of interest. If we were representing him in the Borough of Westchester on an application, that's where there's a conflict. But what the rules require is that we give you notice of the fact that we represent another entity in another municipality and that if that is something you're not comfortable with, we don't go forward. If you are comfortable with it, then you have to sign the waiver. In the instance where you did, where both parties signed the waiver, I don't think somebody could raise as an issue that somehow it's inappropriate because that's, we're following the proper procedure to get your consent in the circumstance.
Yes, thank you.
But again, I, it's municipalities choose, you know, governing bodies choose to do, get conflict counsel all the time. It's not a problem. I I had recommended somebody, I think Kevin has somebody in mind as well, so whatever you choose is fine, obviously.
My recommendation was that we would choose conflict counsel.
I would agree with Mr. McCoy, it's just cleaner.
I agree.
Mr. Metric, do you have any thoughts on?
No, I was going to add one more piece of information that, uh, we did receive these conflict letters, since they have to be countersigned by the developer, they were agreed to by the developer earlier today, but I can't unilaterally agree to things without.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Council's approval.
Okay.
I would just suggest that you try to pick somebody soon because I know that there, especially as far as the planning module process is concerned, for 250, there are some meetings scheduled for next week that you're going to want your counsel at. So, I mean, obviously those can be continued, but, um, if you can think about and work with Kevin and and Sean to pick somebody.
Yeah. Um, I, does it set us back for specifically, you're talking about the Market Street specific, that, that property?
There's a call with the DEP scheduled for Monday.
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously that can be pushed back, everything can be pushed back.
Does it set us back? I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter, it's not our property, I'm not doing it.
Well, I'm, I'm still going to have the call with DEP on Monday, whether I have legal counsel there or not.
Okay.
Well, in the interest of, you know, timing to, to that point of hiring somebody quickly, I mean, we've had recent discussions, you know, we, we did the RFP and settled on, you know, sort of the next highest being Bell War Kelly. I would recommend that, uh, we proceed with, with them as conflict counsel.
Yeah, I would clearly align with that since we just had this conversation last night. And I would just remind council that, uh, when we issued the RFP, it didn't actually go to committee. There was a recommendation that we should review solicitor and legal representation. We issued the RFP. RFPs were reviewed by all members of council. We reviewed them in executive committee and, uh, narrowed our selection.
I, I do.
Just a point of clarification here, I do have documentation that they did actually go through committee. They went through the finance committee and I, I have it right here.
And Bell War Kelly was, uh, one of the finalists. And I believe, Mr. McGinnis, you, um, made a, a motion to update the motion presentation that evening.
Uh, Mr. Gore?
I'd just like to get some clarification that if you're going to select conflict counsel and you're going to go with Bell War Kelly, the decision is what it is, um, that it's only going to be for, um, um, 250 East Market Street and 330 West Market Street as we already have conflict counsel assigned for 611 East Neale Street.
Yeah, so just those two developments specifically. Okay. Like I said, it'd be appropriate, I can't make motions here, so.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to, um, appoint conflict counsel for the properties that Mr. Gore just mentioned.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, um, to, uh, to point conflict counsel, um, for the Elycon developments mentioned. Uh, any public comment? I didn't want a public comment, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, would it be in order to clarify who that conflict counsel is in the motion?
Ms. Dorsey, you want to?
I'd like to recommend Bell War Kelly as conflict counsel, uh, to represent the borough in the properties mentioned.
And Mr. McCoy, you seconded, right? Are you good, you good with that, that change? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I think a, uh, uh, Mr. Metric, it's, uh, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Present.
Is that a yes or no?
You got to vote yes or no.
No.
Okay.
Ms. Vicaro is absent. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
No, uh, but the motion passes four to two. Okay, uh, moving on to our last discussion item, which was added, which was C, um, which is from our consent agenda N, which is approve the 732 dash 734 South Matlack Street Final Land Development Plan. Um, Mr. Allen asked if this would be pulled off? Anything you want to add to this?
I think I just wanted to stay true to my view that I wanted to see two twins instead of the four units all, all attached, that's it.
Okay. Any other?
I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, I apologize. I just, I was hoping to see a plan where there were the two twins instead of the four adjoined, that's all.
Any other discussion or comments? Anybody in the public? Okay. And it would be appropriate to either, uh, to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve discussion item, uh, C. Uh, any, uh, without further discussion, Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Uh, Mr. Flynn?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Vicaro is absent. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Right? Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries five to one. Okay, uh, and then we're under our consent agenda, item number 11, consent.
Uh, Mr. Metric. Mr. Stefano, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made and, uh, seconded to approve our consent agenda, which I'll remind everybody does not include item N. Uh, any public comment? Okay, Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Uh, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro is absent. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Uh, item 12 is other business. Is there any other business? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.